Okay. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the last day of the year. Today's day is Friday, December 31st, 2021. It's 9:30 a.m. this morning. We are conducting our last regular Commissioners' Court session of the year today. And so we'll, let's see, start out with the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 13th, 2021. Yeah, that's what you didn't put on. Okay, I'm sorry. It is on there. Yes, yes, I'm sorry. I skipped down too far. We need to stand for our pledge and our invitation led by Commissioner Kelly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Good morning, Father. We come to you this morning just thanking you for the blessings that you've given us. And Lord, just thank you for the mercy and the grace and everything you've been. And Lord, thank you for a great year that you blessed us with in the county. And Lord, we just ask that you be with our military and our first responders and just be with them as they take this nation and our county. And Lord, just be with those that have gotten COVID and help them to recover. And Lord, just be with their relatives and discomfort them. Lord, we ask that you give us knowledge and wisdom as we build these items under the agenda. And Lord, we just ask that you bless this county for another year. Can you pray any more precious things?
All right, sorry about that. I skipped down. I saw where it was 9:30, but anyway, now we're up to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December 13th, 2021, the special call meeting of December 14th, 2021, and special sessions of December 10th, 2021, December 17th, 2021, December 22nd, 2021. You've all had a chance to review those minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve those as written? Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right. The next item we have is our auditors report.
Good morning.
Good morning. I have several budget amendments. The first one is for courthouse security fund, Fund 55, to carry over from previous year, $5,877.94. And this is to recognize unbudgeted revenue due to the expenses of additional panic alarm system and the panic button and the M2M communicators. So we're having to use money that's in that, in that fund to fund that.
Okay.
And that's the revenue side.
This is the revenue part of the courthouse security fund carryover for previous year in the amount of $5,877,000. Lord, to recognize unbudgeted revenue and additional expenses for panic alarm, panic button. Do I hear a motion to approve this budget limit? Make a motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. And Jesse, as far as we know now, all of our systems are up and running good.
That is correct, sir.
The second budget amendment is from the courthouse security fund, courthouse security, and it was to pay carpet tax. I think I have that wrong. But it was, it's the $5,877.94. And it was the, it's William C. Incorporated, but it's the, for that, to recognize the expense, the unbudgeted expense for the panic alarm system and the panic button and the two M2M communicators. And that's the expense side, and that's what we went over that was not budgeted.
Okay. This is, the other was the revenue side. This is the expense side.
Yes.
Of the same budget limit, the amount of $5,877.94. Do I hear a motion to approve this budget limit? Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
The next budget amendment is the general fund insurance recoveries in the amount of $1,450.38. And this is to recognize unbudgeted revenue for the broken pipe that caused water damage in the district clerk's office to three desks and three drawer mobile file cabinets. And the revenue received has been recorded in the insurance recoveries.
Okay. Budget amendment, insurance recoveries in the amount of $1,450.38 for the damage that Melinda talked about. Do I hear a motion to approve this budget amendment? Make the motion. Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
The next one is the district clerk insurance recoveries from Amazon business where in the amount of $1,450.38. And this is to recognize the unbudgeted expense to replace the three desks and mobile file cabinets due to water damage. And the revenue received has been recorded in the insurance recovery.
Okay. This is the expense side of that last budget amendment. Do I hear a motion to approve this one in the amount of $1,450.38? Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
My next one is also the general fund insurance recoveries in the amount of $1,390.70. This is to recognize unbudgeted revenue for JP3 structure damage due to hail. And the revenue received has been recorded in the insurance recoveries.
Okay. Revenue side of the insurance recoveries in the amount of $1,390.70 for JP3 hail damage. Do I hear a motion to approve this line of, I made, I'm starting this budget amendment. Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
My last budget amendment is to recognize the unbudgeted expense for JP3 Insurance Recoveries, Reed's Glass Incorporated for $497.50. JP3 Insurance Recoveries from Roger Foot Lawn Care for $140. And JP3 Insurance Recoveries for Reed's Glass in the amount of $753.20 for the repairs due to structure damage caused by hail.
Okay. You've heard the budget amendment request from Melinda for Reed's Glass in the amount of $497.50, Roger Foot Lawn Care in the amount of $140, and Reed's Glass again in the amount of $753.20 for a total of $1,390.70. Do I hear a motion to approve this budget amendment? Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
My next item are line item transfers. The first line item transfer is the general fund, nondepartmental contingency fund for $5,000, to the courthouse building and grounds maintenance for $5,000.
Okay. Line item transfer from the contingency fund in the amount of $5,000 to building and grounds in the amount of $5,000. Do I hear a motion to approve that line item transfer? Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
My next line item transfer is the extension CEA ad conference seminars and dues in the amount of $235.44. The extension travel expenses CEA 4H, the amount of $1,600. And the extension advertisement for $150 to the extension office supplies in the amount of $1,750. And to other supplies in the amount of $235.44.
Okay. From the line item transfer from the conferences, expenses and advertisement, the first conference was $235.44, the next one was travel expense of $1,600, and the last was an advertisement in $150 to office supplies in the amount of $1750 and other supplies in the amount of $235.44. Do I hear a motion to approve this line item transfer? Make a motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
My last line item transfer is for precinct three fuel in the amount of $7,000 to precinct three equipment maintenance and repairs for $7,000.
Okay. The request on line item transfer for precinct three from fuel, $7,000 into equipment maintenance and repair, $7,000. Do I hear a motion to approve this line item transfer? Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
My next line item is to approve the annual 2022 stopping recipients, and that amount is $407,015.
Okay. This is our stipends that we give to different agencies and organizations within the county in the amount of $407,015. Do I hear a motion to approve these stipends for the year 2022?
Aye.
I don't guess you want me to stand taller than you.
No.
Okay. So the motion to pay the stipends in the amount of $407,015, do I hear a motion to approve this? Do you open or read it out?
No, I really would.
Okay. All right. The first one we give out is to the Plainview Hell County Economic Development Corporation. We give them $50,000. The second one is to the Plainview Hell County EDC for their marketing centers in the amount of $25,000. Hell Center Ambulance, we give $36,000. Petersburg Ambulance, we give $36,000. Abernathy Fire Protection, we give $12,500. Petersburg Volunteer Fire Department, we give $12,500. Halfway Volunteer Fire Department, we give $12,500. Admison Volunteer Fire Department, we give $12,500. Hell Center Volunteer Fire Department, we give $12,500. Hell County Child Welfare, we give $36,000. Central Plains Center, we give $36,500. Let's see. Hell County Crisis Center, we give $3,500. Plainview YMCA for their safe program, we give $5,000. Parents Place, we give $5,000. Hell County Senior Citizens, we give $9,500. Hell Center Senior Citizens, we give $8,000. Petersburg Senior Citizens, we give $8,000. Our Hell County Historical Commission, we give $1,000. Hell County Farm and Ranch Museum, we give $5,000. Hell Center Public Library, we give $3,500. Abernathy Public Library, we give $3,500. Petersburg Public Library, we give $3,500. Lunder Memorial Library, we give $9,500. Hell County Literacy Council, we give $3,500. The Holton Volunteer Ambulance, we give $3,500. The Abernathy Ambulance Service through UMC, we give $36,000. The Holton Fire Protection, we give $3,000. The Hell County Mills on Wheels, we give $3,010. The Lotto Estacado Museum, we give $10,000. And then the Plainview Hell County Crime Stoppers, we give $1,500.
Now we know we're $407,015.
And so that makes up the $407,015. So, and we've given these stipends, not always in this amount, but we've given these stipends for many years to these different agencies. So do I hear a motion to approve these 2022 stipends? Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
My next line item is to review and approve the maximum state mileage reimbursement rate of 58.5 cents per mile effective January 1st, 2022.
And it was 58?
That's what ours was. It was 58.
Okay. It was 58. 58.5. So, okay, so do I hear, this is from our standard mileage rate for 2022, and it's 58.5. Do I hear a motion to approve this amount for our standard mileage rates? Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
My next line item is to discuss and approve the engagement letter with I. Bailey to perform the FY 2021 audit for Hell County and allow the county judge to sign. And I have given those to Jim. I don't know if you've had a chance to review it.
Excuse me, I have not, but I assume if they're the same we've had, then I think they're fine.
I mean, they are the same, but certainly you can make your decision based on his review of that. The estimated fee for the audit will be $41,500. And if we do have to have a single audit, that will be an additional $10,000. And that is highly likely that we will have to have a single audit.
How does that compare to last year?
It's, it is up a little bit. I think it was, I've got that on my desk. I forgot to bring it down here. I want to say it was like $38,000 last year, but we will have to have a single audit because of all this money that we've received. And they are going to be on.
Pay for it.
They are going to be on site this year, so.
Okay. So you've heard the request for a 2021 audit for I. Bailey in the amount of $21,500 and also allow me to sign this. Do I hear a motion to approve this? Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you.
My last line item is to discuss and approve the engagement letter with I. Bailey to perform the FY 2021 audit of the Plainview Hell County Airport and allow the county judge to sign. And this one, sorry, this one will be $3,000.
All right. So you've heard the request to approve the 2021 audit through I. Bailey for the Plainview Hell County Airport and allow the county judge to sign, and that expense will be $3,000. Do I hear a motion to approve this? Does that? Make the motion. Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion?
I have a question. I guess probably since I've been here, they've always used I. Bailey to do this. Who else does it? Do we have options on that?
There are very limited people that do governmental accounting audits anymore. So, I mean, before it was I. Bailey, we did.
Charles Massey.
Well, that was before. And then.
Oh, it was Davis and Connor.
It was Davis Connor. Davis Connor before that, so. I mean, that's something we can research in the future.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is our treasurer's report.
Good morning. Okay. My first item, I'm going to go under the accounts payable where I'm asking the court to approve a payment of, I'm not exactly sure of the amount. Last year we paid $1,500, and this is insurance for the county judge's well for himself being in the courtroom for the Texas Lawyers Insurance Exchange. We're in the process of doing that transaction, but I do not have an invoice. Now I'm asking the court to allow me to issue a check or the auditor and I to issue a check for payment for his next year coverage.
What happened was they didn't send out applications. Usually they send an application about October, and we fill it out and send it back to them. Well, because of COVID, they didn't send out the applications, but they sent me a letter earlier this week. It said I hadn't filled out the application, and so they sent it to me on email, and I filled it out, and we emailed it back to them yesterday. We just hadn't had it processed, and we don't know the amount yet. We've done this for many years. It's not, you did this for the previous judge. The district judges used to have it done. I guess they still do.
They do. We paid it in January.
And so that's what this will be for. So if y'all will approve her to write a check when it comes in, then I'll bring it back on the 10th with the total. Do I hear a motion to approve that payment at the top? T. Texas Lawyer Insurance Exchange.
Yes.
Make a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Okay, Judge. My next item is asking the court to approve the payroll for 2022. I do this every year. I create this spreadsheet based on the budget book. It is not including any supplement pays the juvenile board or the adult boards pay for their departments for that matter. So I'm asking the court to approve that I be able to pay payroll for 2022 in the amount of $11,458,000. Yes, sir. Well, budget was based on even numbers, so it's an estimate for payroll 2022. Okay.
It's by department.
To approve the 2022 payroll, the grand total is $11,458,000.
Yes, sir.
Even when I got it, $11,458,000 for the year 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve this?
Come on, guys.
Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Okay. My next item actually came prepared for '21. Nobody asked me. My next item.
Oh, let me ask you real quick. What was '21?
'21 was $9,976,266,000. All right. My next item is Teladoc. It's the agreement to have Teladoc as a benefit to the employees. Of course, there is an expense. The expense for last, should I say, this year, 2021, is $407,000, and they're going up to $5,190 per employee per month. Okay? And so I'm just asking the court to approve that payable and also authorize the judge to sign this agreement.
I will just say this time and day and age, the Teladoc is really good because if you try to get into a doctor, it's really difficult to get in to see a doctor. And also, I've heard people talk about their Teladoc plans where they have a pretty significant goal back that they have to pay. So I'm really fortunate that the county provides this to our employees. Like I said, it's coming helpful, so. Do I hear a motion to approve this Teladoc service agreement and allow me to sign? Motion made by Commissioner Daniel. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed.
Okay, Judge. The next item I have is the financial statement for the month ending November 30th of 2021. The monthly clothing balance was $25,882,984.99. I hereby certify that this report is true and correct and request that you place it in the minutes.
You've heard the report from the treasurer. Do I hear a motion to approve this financial statement for the month ending November 30th, 2021? Motion made by Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner King. Any discussion?
I do want to comment, Judge, then, on the second page under the employee benefit plan. We, if you notice that line item, we're at $869,000. We did pay out $96,000, $196,000, but we also received it, $124,000. That's our.
Reimbursement?
Yes, on the, oh my God, I just went, stop law. Yes, sir. Yes, on the, oh my God, I just went, stop law. Yes, sir. So, I did want to point that out. I do have another check coming in that they've already told me, but I do not recall that amount. But I did want to point that particular fund out to you.
So, that'll be pretty close to what it'll be for the year.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's pretty good compared to the previous years.
Really good.
Okay.
Really good.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, so, do I hear a motion to approve this financial statement?
You already said.
Did we already? Okay.
You skipped over it.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Okay, Judge, my last item is the affidavit just stating that the court has received review and approved the financial report to be placed in the new state.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve that affidavit to place this item in the local paper? Motion made by Commissioner King, do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Next item we have is under my, the first item I have is the Petersburg EMS Financial Report for November 2021. They had four dispatches within the city, three transports, one non-transport, three mobile runs. For the month, they had a total revenue of $2,758.55, total expenses in the amount of $5,697.79 for a negative $2,932.24. Do I hear a motion to approve this Petersburg EMS Financial Report for the month of November?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Daniel, do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel, any other discussion? Okay, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, the next item I have is to approve the sale of two trustees for the city of Abenanti. The first one in 1407 East Street, Abenanti, Texas. The legal description thereof of the property is, let me see, in the amount of $1,260. Do I hear a motion to approve the sale of this property in that amount? Motion made by Commissioner Daniel, do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, the next property is 1108 Fourth Street in Abenanti. The legal description is lot 10, and that price is in the amount of $27,007. So, do I hear a motion to approve the sale of that property for that amount?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner, do I hear second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Daniel, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. The next item on the agenda is to take up consideration of possible action or order to reform election precincts following the redistricting of the Hell County Commissioners' precinct pursuant to Chapter 42 of the Texas Election Code and any resulting changes that have an impact on the justice of these and constable precincts. And so, I believe we provided you a copy of this in your box earlier this month. This is an order conforming that for me to fill it out and sign. The first correction will be that it's listed art, that we're doing this in November and actually we're doing it today, so it will be December 31st. And then Jim, on these steps, do I need to read those out loud or will we just make these available by posting them? And I'm sure Latrice and Roland will contact the affected people.
Roland will.
Roland will.
Yes. Sorry.
Sorry, Roland will, by their changes of their voting boundaries. And so, I forget how many people affected. There wouldn't lie, and most of them were within the city of Bayou.
Right, like maybe 800 or 800.
Not a lot.
Okay, but they'll receive a notice from Roland saying that they have gone from this particular precinct to this other precinct. And so, basically, the maps that were presented with this, we talked to Mr. Bass, he says, you know, it's sort of a catch-22 deal, a little rough. Some of them are hard to read, but they're not going to come out with really nice detail until we approve the boundary lines. So, but he did go, we did have a meeting between myself and Latrice and Roland with Mr. Bass, and he sort of went over what the changes were and stuff with them. So, basically, and told us at that particular time that we needed to present this in today's agenda, I mean, in today's meeting, and have the commissioners vote on and sign. So, do I hear a motion to approve these conforming election precincts and the revised commissioner of court precincts as presented to us by Bob Bass and the socialists? Motion made by Commissioner Kelly, do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner King. Okay, is there any discussion? And like I said, most of the discussion concerns residents or areas within the city of Plainview, because that is where our primary population lies. And so, it was easier to make those adjustments to, you know, within the guidelines that Mr. Bass has to get in. So, most of these changes were made within the city of Plainview. So, all right.
Judge?
Yes.
And he did say that we would get better maps, the good Tyler ones, right?
Yes.
After we approve it, okay?
After it was approved, that they would be able to provide us better quality maps. They won't change any.
No.
They're the same as what he's presented to us.
Where we could see it better.
But it's just how difficult to read on this deal. So, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'll go ahead and sign this copy. Okay, the next item we have on the agenda is the district court.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, I hear three different things. Let me find them. First thing. Judge Chapoli found that, and I'm sorry I didn't bring it, but she had told me that something had passed that now the courts have to notify the defendant by a text message on hearings. So, luckily, we already have in place where they, you know, we were notifying by email, and so it was called e-notices. So, this is just an additional part of that e-notices. And e-notices, they don't have, you know, once the email is in for the attorneys and the bondsman, we don't ever have an email for the defendant. But we are, we do have the sheriff's office working to start getting the cell phone number of the defendant, because that's how the majority, but as long as it's put in there and they check that box, then when the judge sets a hearing and does a notice, it, the system will automatically notify, send a text to the people, we have their cell phone and the box is checked to send notices, so which will be the defendant and probably attorneys and bondsman also. But that program to add the e-notices, okay, we have e-notices, to add the text messaging, it's $10,456 with Tyler Technology. And I'd like to pay for it. Last I checked with the auditor's office, and there's like $14,000 in there. And so, we have enough money to pay for it out of this year's budget. They probably won't get it turned on and everything till sometime in January, but it's $10,456.
And when you say out of that, that's the computer fund?
Yes, out of the computer fund. I'm sorry.
Okay, so.
You have to specify that it's going to be paid for out of this year's budget.
Okay, all right. So, I need a motion to approve this program to be paid for from Tyler Technology, and this amount of $10,456 will be paid for out of the 2021 computer fund.
And authorize you to, they didn't send it yet, because they just sent in the proposal, but to authorize you to sign the contract.
And also, the authorization for me once the proposal is received, to sign it.
And this will be an annual expense, or?
No, it's just a one-time expense. The annual part of it is nothing. It's added in with the e-notices, the one, you know, the yearly maintenance of it or whatever they call it. But it doesn't have a yearly on it.
So, do I hear that in the form of a motion? To pay this out of the 2021 computer fund in the amount of $10,456 to Tyler Technology, now allow me to sign the motion. Motion made by Commissioner Daniel, do I hear second? Second by Commissioner King, any discussion?
And I want to have your court and both district courts, but both JPs will also have access to pay the money. You know, it's a straight across the board for all courts.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Okay, if not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Okay, so it's not to leave any money in that computer fund, also, both security spots in this building, those computers that the security guys are using in this building are just, you know, stuff that we've handed down and everything, and we've had lots of issues with it. And so, I want to replace both computers in this room and then downstairs at the, in the basement. And that, that's two. There's seven, oh, $1,499.98, and for that to also be paid out of the computer fund.
Is that for one or for more?
It's for two. There are $7,499.98 each.
Okay, so you've heard the request to purchase two computers for the courthouse security here in the 500 Broadway location in the amount of $1,499.98. Do I hear a motion to approve that? And that will be paid for out of the 2021 computer fund.
Computer fund, yes, please.
I'll make the motion. Motion made by Commissioner Daniel, do I hear second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
Okay, the next thing is, there is a new court cost, and Jim's going to help me with this. Judge Chapoli gave me, she is out of town, so she gave me kind of a script to read to you guys. So, I'm going to read that to you real quick and then we'll discuss. But it is a court cost. Okay, the district judges are requesting the commissioners' court to establish an alternative dispute resolution system to facilitate the pleasurable and expeditious resolution of disputes in Hell County. The ADR system is established under Civil Practice and Remedies Code, Chapter 152, under CPRC 152.004. The district and county clerks are required to collect a court cost, not to exceed $15 or $5 for the JP courts, in each civil case filed in county and district court, with some exceptions. The clerks of the courts are required to collect and pay the cost to the county treasurer, who must deposit the fees in a separate fund known as alternate dispute resolution system fund. The fund is administered by the commissioners' court and may only be used to establish and maintain the ADR system. The judges, which can include the JP's, if the commissioners' court decides to include them, would order cases to mediation either through a private mediator or the Lubbock County Office of Dispute Resolution. If the judge orders mediation and the parties do not have the ability to pay them, pay, then mediation would be paid from the ADR fund. Parties that have the ability to pay would pay for the mediation from their own funds. The district judges, Judge Amal and Jim Tyree, are continuing to work out the details of the ADR system, and we ask that you both to establish an ADR system with the specific details of the system to be developed at a later time. But I think the judge and Jim got together, and I think this is what I do next. And then, they are, skip that whisper, Greg, Johnny on the slide. Okay, so, no reading on this? Or just?
You want me to give you the Reader's Digest version?
Yeah.
So, previously, the, well, let me back up. The legislative, this last legislative session, the legislature basically repealed every court cost and fee in Texas. And I was kind of glad to see this, because I didn't know where they actually put it back. I'd seen the bill and read the bill where they repealed it all, but I didn't know where they put it. So, previously, the statute provided that y'all could establish an ADR system, alternative dispute resolution system, and assess up to a $15 per case filing fee. They repealed that. Now, they moved it over, this is where I didn't know what they'd done. They moved it over to the local government code, and for example, in just a regular civil case, in district court, you're going to pay, the litigant's going to pay $213 to file the case. And then, the section in the local government code has, after that amount, that says, and all these little percentages go to these certain things, and the ADR fee is like 7.423% of that fee, which comes out to about $15.81. Now, like I said, previously, you could, that was optional. You could say, well, we'll have the ADR system and we'll assess this up to $15 fee. Now, you're collecting the fee regardless of whether we have the system, but if we don't have the system, then we're sending that money to the controller's office, and he's going to spend it, actually, I think in the e-filed-in system. I don't even know, I don't know why they would need more money to go to that, but anyway. So, this would keep that money here, and I will tell you, for like our CPS cases, for example, we used to do a lot of mediations before final hearings, and we'd get mediators out of Lubbock through the Lubbock County Office. And then, and we did that. They basically sent somebody, and it was paid for somehow. I don't know how, but we didn't have to actually pay any funds to them. And then, we, probably, I don't know, I'm going to say five years ago, maybe or so, we, I called to set one up, and they're like, oh yeah, who's going to pay the mediation fee? Well, I don't have funds in my budget to pay our much money per case to mediate, so we didn't do it. And it's been real hard. There's, not in every case, but in a lot of cases, it would be helpful if we could bring everybody in, set it would be helpful if we could bring everybody in, sit down and try to work something out because most of the time, we probably couldn't work out some sort of final resolution in the case without having to have a huge drawn-out final hearing. But it is exceedingly hard to get a bunch of attorneys, because in those cases, we probably have at least three or four attorneys involved, to get them all to say, oh, yeah, I can do these certain dates, and then get everybody together. And so, it would be helpful if the courts could order, you're going to do a mediation, and then, then they have to. So, that's my sort of personal plea, but, and I'm sure it would be helpful, you know, in other civil, excuse me, civil cases where they can work out the deal instead of having to go to, you know, have a several-hour trial on whatever case it is. So, that's, I'll be glad to answer any questions, but that's about everything in a nutshell.
So, even to define that nutshell a little more, if we don't do this, then that money is going to go to the state, or we can keep that money here and possibly use it to help local people?
Yes.
Okay.
And the money's going to be collected regardless if you do it or you don't, it's just going to go to the Controller's Office rather than the state here. And basically, this order just says that y'all are establishing the county ADR system and then that we will eventually figure out exactly how that system's going to work. Of course, we're probably going to have to build up some money in it to begin with before we can really actually make it work, so.
Okay, and this does only affect civil cases? It hasn't affect criminal cases?
Yes, there's a provision for criminal, where you can include criminal cases, and I can't, I mean, I, for the life of me, can't figure out even where you would do that, so. This only includes civil.
Do we have any idea how much money we're looking to collect?
Well, because I'll charge fifteen for every civil case, Latrice, I'll charge fifteen for every civil case, and the JP, each JP will charge five dollars for each civil case is how much we'll get in. So, you know, mine roughly, I thought probably three to four hundred dollars a month, and Latrice is probably, you know.
Maybe that.
Because is it on probate too?
I think it's on probate.
Yeah, I think it's on her probate.
So, we'll make it up in our probate, yeah.
So, you know, it'll, it'll add up.
And the JPs do, they have a lot.
Yes.
Even though theirs is a lesser amount, they have a lot.
And that would let them refer cases, you know, small claims cases to mediation too, so.
But the one thing that Judge Chapoli, and I know Jim said it, one thing Judge Chapoli did explain to me is that this account will not pay for all mediation, it's only if they can, if they're indigent on a civil case.
Okay.
Sorry. All right, so this is the resolution for all of that, creating it. And since the court creates it, and Jim drew this up for you guys to, for the judge to sign.
I have a question.
Okay.
Because I do get all those funds and disperse it and divide it, on that setup, Jim mentioned the two hundred dollar fee and percentages going different direction, is that already going to be set up in the system to do that, or is it something?
It's something the treasurer sets up, that's why.
I would like.
It's like the criminal.
I would like more communication based on that. I know we are consolidating a lot of those fees and we've got new fees, but I just need a little bit more communication.
Well, the state told us, and then I assume the state told y'all.
All I know, Carla, is that we were consolidating had new fees. I still don't have a copy of the report, but I just, what I need to know is.
I gave mine, I gave Latrice and mine and both JPs to Monica.
Yeah, I saw that, but that's vague still. But I'm just saying that if, if it's going to, I need the breakdown of how those fees are set up, and I know Melinda set up some line items, but it does involve us also.
Okay, Jim, do I need to read this resolution?
Judge, I think unless you just want to.
Well, I never will, so if you say I don't have to, then it will be available for anyone that wants to look at it.
So, can I ask a question?
Yes.
On the earlier, you mentioned that is it a fund that has to be set up or just a line item?
Well, it has to be maintained, this, that percentage of the fees, and there's a whole list, I couldn't even tell you what the others are, but there's a whole list of percentages that, out of this two hundred and thirteen dollars, for example. And that portion of it has to go in and can only be used for the ADR system, so.
I think we're good with the line item, Melinda, as long as we do it to Fontana, we'll be fine.
I think as long as you just account for it and say we've got X, X number of dollars for ADR.
I just wanted to be clear, I didn't know if we have to, if we have to set it up where we have to monitor revenue and expense. That's, I guess, what I'm thinking.
Well, I guess you'd probably have to monitor expense because at some point, theoretically, we'll have a case, like a CPS case, where, you know, parents can't pay to mediate, and, you know, the, I guess, my portion, I would assume, would come out of the county, so there would be an expense there to pay for the mediator or whatever.
You might have hit it there, Melinda, if we have to monitor expense and revenue, then I think we may need to set up a separate account.
We may have to set up a fund.
Okay, so, I hear a motion to approve the system in which we would take that funding and set up this system so that if we had local mediation that was needed and the parties involved were proved to be indigent, then they would be able to access this money. So, basically, what I guess I'm looking for is a vote to approve, to put this funding aside for that local mediation. Do I hear that in the form of a motion? And allow me to sign this resolution. Right, motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear second? Second. Second by Commissioner King. Obviously, there's some questions about the accounting issues of it, but assuming Jim will basically have to work themselves out as we get into that process.
I would think so, Judge, and I can certainly talk to Melinda and Ida and see, and give you the statute where it says what percentage is going to be.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I should clarify, my job's only to collect the fees, not to disperse them. I collect them and turn them over to the treasurer. That's my job. That's Latrice's job. I would feel that we would need to work together regardless, and still, we still work for the counties.
Any other discussion? If not, all of those in favor say aye. Aye, all of those opposed. Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is from Emergency Management, Jessica.
Morning. I'll keep it short. On the bright side, this will be the last time I appear before the Commissioners' Court this year. What I wanted to talk about this morning is we're at the last hurdle before we, and we're on track to receive the Excellence in Safety Award or Safety Achievement Award for both for Hill County. That places in a very elite category, hasn't been done for quite a number of years. And so, before I request the approval on this, I have to say, first off, I wish I could take credit for all this hard work, but most of the hard work was either Tyler and her people there, primarily Tyler that did a lot of this typing on the policies that we, we're trying to implement. So, thank you for your side of the hard work. Here a few months ago, the judge appointed a safety committee. That safety committee consists of the Commissioner Daniels, Tyler, Chief Deputy Ellen Burtnaugh, WH, Precinct Foreman, and myself. The goal of the committee, of course, is pretty simple, is just to prevent accidents, injuries, and illnesses on the job. The overall, the overall objective, of course, is to prevent those accidents, illnesses, but at the same time, it helps our county as far as the insurance premiums go. So, we put together a Hill County Accident Prevention Plan, which I have here in my hand, if anyone wants to look at it, I'd be glad to share that with you. The committee members will have one, and they will be implementing this as we move along. That's the last hurdle I need, we need, so that we can move forward and be, and hopefully receive that award for the Hill County. It's been quite a few years since we've had it. So, at this point now, I request that the Commissioners, you know, if I do that, do you, anyone have any questions on the committee?
Has Jim approved the plea?
Judge, all it was, honestly, it's, it's done by TAC. I mean, we, yeah, we could, and all we did was insert Hill County in the areas and maybe named the chair, the parties and the chair and the co-chairs, so I'll be glad to send it to Jim and let him look it over before it's.
But it's basically a deal that was.
Yeah, it's, it's a template.
King from TAC, yes, if I have any questions.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Now, I request that we approve the Hill County Accident Prevention Plan.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve this Hill County Accident Prevention Plan as presented by the committee? Motion made by Commissioner Cornell. Do I hear second? Second, my Commissioner Kelly. Any further discussions? And all of those in favor say aye. Aye, all of those opposed. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Next item is Commissioner Precinct Two.
This is just an interlocal agreement between us and the city of Petersburg. I was contacted by the mayor, Mrs. Wilson, regarding one specific road that's there that they're having issues, drainage and everything else, where it's actually impacting residents around it. And so, it would, it's not going to cost the county other than what, personnel-wise, I think one man and one machine for approximately one day to get that accomplished.
Any questions? So, you're making this in the form of a motion and asking to be able to sign?
Yes, for me to sign, okay.
So, you heard the request from Precinct Two on this interlocal agreement and request for me to be authorized to sign this agreement. Do I hear second? Second, my Commissioner King. Any discussion? If not, all of those in favor say aye. All of those opposed. And then, our last item is Commissioner Precinct Four.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to hire Daniel Castillo as equipment operator. His present date, start date was twelve twenty and twenty-one. He did step thirteen one, and his salary is thirteen seventy-three.
Okay, all right. You've heard the, and you put that in the form of a motion? Have a motion to approve the hiring of Daniel Castillo at October thirteen, step one, at an hourly rate of thirteen dollars seventy-three cents per hour, and the effective date on December twenty. Do I hear second? Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? If not, all of those in favor say aye. Aye, all of those opposed. All right, well, I appreciate everybody being here today, I appreciate all the work that you've done this year. I look forward to a new year. So, I hope you have a happy New Year's Eve and a happy new year, and be safe, and be sure to eat your black eye of the beast. If there's nothing else, we'll send it to you. I'm sorry, ten thirty-four.